Okay, uh, everyone's, everyone's on, uh, on board now, everyone's connected. So, first thing on the agenda, I'd like to call a board meeting, um, to order. Uh, September twenty eighth, which happens to be a great day for, uh, my wife, but I'm not going to say what it is. But anyway, um, uh, with, with, with that being said, I'd like for everyone to, uh, face the flag if they've got one, and re- and Ms. Porter will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Welcome.
Uh, next on the agenda, if, if the, if we approve the agenda, we're gonna add a three point three, which is a Herford, Northampton County Smart Start facility use, um, and four point four, which is stipend for HR personnel. Uh, with, with those additions, um, can I have a motion to approve the minutes? I mean, I'm sorry, approve the agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda with the said additions to it?
Second it.
Then promptly move and second any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Um, next is a, it's not only a, but approval of the minutes from the last month's meeting? Alright. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from, um, the August twenty fourth meeting?
Yes, sir.
We approve the minutes from the twenty fourth of August meeting?
Second a motion.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh-huh.
Motion carried. Then, uh, two point three, I'll just skip over the new high school, um, update, Dr. Wright?
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, uh, the, uh, construction of the new high school elementary school is coming right along. We are, uh, very, very pleased to note that the, um, center block construction, the foundation construction and the, uh, the inner walls, if you will, of the building, uh, for the first floor are, uh, probably about seventy percent complete for the main building. Uh, they have also, uh, began, uh, uh, loading steel, uh, uh, onto the building for the second floor construction as well as other places that it needs to be. Uh, there is, uh, also, uh, work being done, the, uh, the, the grounds have been prepared for the auditorium and, uh, we should see some construction on that portion of the building also, uh, coming up really soon. Um, Mr. Hunter has been out there today and I plan to go sometime this afternoon, uh, to get an update. And this week also, um, I think we'll be getting another video and you'll see some, you'll see, um, some marked improvement in terms of work over the last one. I think it'll be pretty eye opening to see, uh, what's been done in the last two weeks because, of course, as that building gets taller and so forth, exciting time. Everywhere I go now, people are talking about how beautiful it looks and, uh, you know, we haven't put one brick on it yet, it's just from looking at the, the center block construction. So, we're really proud of the progress and, um, I'm, I'm sure that all of you have driven by there and seen it, uh, and, uh, we're just excited and everything is on schedule, that's the main thing that we talk about at this portion. Uh, everything is on schedule for us to open, uh, August of twenty one.
When do they, do you know what the schedule is for him to be, uh, have the booth on where they can roll and get, get being closed in? I hope the fall winter.
Yeah, I, I, I would think it would be, uh, certainly before the hard winter because, uh, what, what they have to do obviously is, is block it up to the second floor and they've already started on some of that. Um, I, I would guess, if I had to guess, I would say this is the end of September, maybe, uh, mid-November. I, I would say probably, but that's a guess, I'm not, I'm not, don't hold me to that.
Be a nice Christmas present for them.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Yep. Uh, any other comments about the new school? Uh, both on board, um, Ms. Parker?
Again, good morning, Chair Shields, board members. Um, this month, which is September, bulletin boards were done by Herford County Middle School and the creators were Mrs. Lillian Pugh, the bookkeeper, and Mrs. Wanda Outlaw, guidance counselor, and Krista Phillips is the principal of that school. And if you will look at the one flowers and it states that the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one forecast, sunshine with a one hundred percent chance of student learning and student growth. And it's very unique because the sunflowers have on mass, so it's showing social distancing also as long, a- as well as keeping safe. In our boardroom, we have H C P S, we are stepping up our game. Even though we're not into our sports now, they have the different, um, sports that we participate in, going up the steps. And it's saying all in, remote learning, S E L, Canvas, and student packets. Thank you.
Okay, now thanks to the middle school, the board, uh, the both boards of great. Um, next is Tetherkin, please.
No problem, thank you.
The R two. Uh, we're gonna skip over our five minute recess, we did that when we broke and closed session. Next is accountability update, Ms. Ward.
Good morning, Chairman Shields, board members, and Dr. Wright. Um, in your packet, we provided a update for some accountability and data information. Uh, I took some input from the board members a couple of months ago when we talked about you would like to see more graphs and, and data and information. So, with the help of Ms. Norman, our secondary, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, our elementary curriculum director, uh, we are working on this interactive notebook that will hold our data and be used throughout the year. So, this will be a ongoing process that we can use to update as we have different benchmarks and other information as we move forward. So, as you can see in the information on the accountability tab for the district, we just, uh, reiterated what we know is currently going on with, uh, because of COVID, that our federal and state summit of assessment and accountability measurements that were normally required by state and federal were waived. So, we do not have any E O G or E O C information for the, uh, nineteen twenty school year. We'll be using our, as our foundation, uh, amount, uh, percentages, those that were in eighteen nineteen. We do, uh, still carry forward with the school identification list for comprehensive target support and also the low performing schools, uh, list, those will continue on, uh, through the next year. And then new data for the cohort graduation rate, as was reported to the state school board. So, you can see the chart that we produced and a table to kind of outline for you the state, uh, graduation rate as compared to our district and then each of the three high schools. And we did that in graph form, so you could kind of see the trend as well as in a table. And we included in that the number of graduates that our district had, and this was with the four-year cohort. I put in a section about read to achieve, so you could just see, uh, with the new way we had to report data for the twenty nineteen twenty school year, uh, they just wanted us to report, uh, whether students were on track since we did not do any of the end of the year testing. So, you can see there from the graphic that I provided you, our first, second, and third grade, uh, gave you the district results as well as each individual school on track, just meant students who were performing at, uh, level three, four, or five, um, based on the iStation data that we could collect and those that had completed the portfolio. The next section is I wanted to give you an idea of what's happening right now, uh, currently. And so, uh, we are using iStation as our, uh, progress monitoring tool for the coming year. So, I wanted to give you where we were at on the beginning of the year assessment, and this is as of, uh, September the twenty first. And these are district results here by grade level, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth. And that gives you an idea of our first, uh, virtual administration, uh, to give you an idea of where our students are at. And then right behind that, I wanted to show you an example of how we would be looking at grade level analysis to try to look at our gaps. Uh, so you'll see, we did a chart for you where we were at the second grade when we left in March compared to what those students assessed at, at third grade at the beginning of this school year in September. Uh, one thing to remember when you look at this particular data is that we're not comparing apples to apples because not all of our students tested, so, um, but this is the data that we're going to be working with this year and how we need to be looking at that. The last graph in that section, I just wanted you to get an idea of what our virtual participation looks like. Uh, doing that, we, most of our formative assessments until such time as we return to the building are gonna be, have to be conducted virtually. I wanted you to have an idea of what percent of our students, uh, were able to participate in that. And of course, you can see from that graph that our, um, kindergarten and first grade, uh, who do not have devices provided by the district at this time until we're able to get those purchased with the COVID money and distributed, uh, that those are our lowest participations at this time. The next section, I just wanted to give you an idea of a universal screener. We will be using universal screeners this year for English Language Arts, Math, and S E L. This is the data that we have, uh, as of the time I had to prepare the report. STAR is through our Renaissance program that we will be using for this data. And we do have, um, C S Brown STEM, uh, will be done second semester because we are using English one and English two, and that's not in their master schedule till next year, till next semester. And Bearfield, uh, we are finishing their STAR assessment, so you will not see data for those two schools in this particular presentation. So, I did a, a, just a separate quick page where you can see for each of the schools that have completed their STAR assessment.
I'm calling because I'm, I'm checking to see your availability, um, I'm having a septum tank issue.
So, I am, uh, showed you just quickly each of the schools and where they're at with that assessment. Now, this is, this assessment is based on where the students are using the English Language Arts Standard Course of Study objectives. And STAR says that their program is correlated, um, and that if we put a forty percent, uh, proficiency rating and our students were scoring at forty percent with the STAR assessment or above, they should be scoring proficient on the E O G. We set our baseline at fifty, uh, but this is one of the things that we'll be tracking to help us evaluate our product and our fidelity and our use of the data to help our students. So, you can kind of see quickly there where each of our schools are in regards to our STAR assessment. We also, uh, at the very end, gave you, uh, an analysis of virtual participation for STAR by school level. This is not by grade, but this is by school level, um, so, and the total number of, of students that we have assessed up to this point. For our universal screening with STAR, we'll be looking at that three times a year, uh, to compare the data. And then we'll also have state benchmark, we will be doing, uh, the check-in to also use that data to correlate and see if our tools are good, um, predictors and helpful in us moving our students forward. Is there any question regarding the, um, data presentation that I can answer?
Ms. Ward, Mr. Chair? Yeah? Ms. Ward, uh, going back to the iStation, uh, reading results?
Yes, sir.
Agreed, I think it's one through five we have here.
Yes, sir.
Understanding, you know, where our kids have been in virtual, but have we started thinking about, uh, those fourth and fifth grade readers? With thirty-one and thirty-six percent, I mean, have we, are we, what are we planning for those kids?
From this data, teachers are supposed to be using this information to set up their small group. Uh, we have been doing professional development with our teachers every month in regards to, uh, iStation and we extended that clear to the fifth grade for that very concern that you're bringing up, Mr. Hall, um, that we, the teachers will be doing, uh, or, and have already started small group instruction, uh, and being able to differentiate that instruction off of these istation results. iStation also has an independent practice and each of the teachers have required, uh, depending on the grade level, anywhere from twenty to thirty minutes of independent practice uh, that students are to be doing as a part of their virtual lessons from home.
And this might not be, uh, a question you can answer off the, uh, top of your head, but are the teachers, or will the teachers be teaching from where the kids were? Or would they be re-teaching concepts already learned? Or, or concepts refreshing? And which one is going, do you have an idea where they're gonna start?
So, for whole group instruction, uh, virtual lessons, they are supposed to be teaching the whole group instruction based on the standard course of study for the grade level the students are at. But small group instruction and a si- individual assignments that can be given through the istation, that is to be at where the student's level is. Uh, so, for example, you've got forty-five percent of our fourth graders below level. They will be working on skills, the istation divides it out and will show you, like, maybe that student's lowest skill is spelling or vocabulary, but that student's independent work is at their level and then they will pull small groups to work with the students when we have groupings of students and once again, at their level to get them those foundational reading skills, which is what istation is. istation is about the foundational reading skill.
Well, you, well, you're breaking up, but anyway, uh, I did hear the word foundation and to me, that's critical now. It's, uh, making sure that that foundation is solid before we move to new things. You see where I'm coming from?
Yes, sir, and that's what istation is about. It's about those foundational reading skills and just as you said, if a child in the fourth grade isn't, doesn't have the beginning foundational skills such as phonemic awareness, um, they're, they're not gonna be able to perform at the fourth grade level either.
Correct, correct, and, uh, thank you for explaining, I mean, sharing that with me.
If, if anyone would like to see the istation, we'll be happy to get someone, uh, to present that for you and show you. It's an amazing program and I think you'd be surprised at, uh, everything that is a lot, is available there for our teachers. And they will still be having professional development in October, November, and December. And we have been able to use the jumpstart money for that. Uh, that was one of the great benefits out of that jumpstart money is to investigate the science of reading and the importance of that foundation of reading skill.
Well, thank you so much for that, and yes, I, I would be surprised as to what istation is offering, uh, believe me. But with that being said, can I ask this question about S E L at these levels? With these kids, 'cause one day now they're gonna come back, kids can come back to school. And, you know, it's gonna be face to face. Are, are we doing anything now online? I guess it may be difficult to do that with the S E L side of it.
We do have-
This year, I've been out for eight mon- seven months.
Ye- yes, sir. We, we have been and Ms. Biggers and our school counselors, we have, um, of course, at the elementary level, our teachers are doing Miss Kendra, but we also have specific S E L curriculum, uh, from Sampson, Samp from Harmony that, uh, they are working with, teachers are getting trained in that curriculum, lessons and information. And then we are using, uh, uh, three sixty, uh, at the sixth, seventh, eighth through twelfth grade level. And once again, that is also electronic and that we should be doing our universal screening soon in those areas. But the PD Friday that we've been using, we've had teachers, administrators, uh, school counselors that are getting trained and our, many of our counselors are working on classroom lessons also, helping the teachers out with some of these S E L skills.
Well, I just, uh, I thank you for that, I thank you for that, for that info. And I don't know when we're gonna get around to offering the same concepts to our nine through twelve graders. Uh, because of, and I don't have to get into that now, but thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Yes, anything you can help me with istation, I will, I will take it.
Alright, I'll get something put together and, um, we'll get somebody to show you everything that's being done. I, I think my principals all are online, I think they can help you too. Uh, we are, the, the teachers are doing a great job with it and, uh, I, I believe it gives us a lot of information, very helpful.
But that's all we need to know, whether or not it's being helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Ward? Uh, next is three point two, so, I don't know, is the semester fundraiser request for the twenty twenty-one, Ms. Ward?
Chairman Shields, board members, and Dr. Wright, we have presented to you requests for fundraiser. I did put a cover memo with this presentation, as you know, um, we cannot do fundraisers while we're not in the building. Uh, but the principals I know want to be prepared so that once we know when we're gonna be coming back, that these, uh, activities that they had planned are approved and then dates will be set once that is appropriate. There was only one request to begin now and that was the fruit sale, uh, for the band. And I think, you know, many people use that fruit sale for Christmas gifts and, and other things. So, it was, uh, thought that maybe it might be good if, if we could go ahead and do the fruit sale if you approved that. But the others will be on hold until such time as we return to the building.
Uh, you have a request coming from the administration that we have, uh, and, and the, uh, fundraiser request. All of them be on hold if, uh, they would like for us to approve the, uh, fruit sale for the band, uh, because of the timing of that, um, so what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, this is Dr. Sharon, I think this is a well thought out plan and I certainly wanna make a motion that we approve it.
I second it because a lot of the community look forward to the fruit sale during the holiday times.
Mm-hmm. Ms. Shields? Yeah, I, I certainly would support it, but I think we also need to put some emphasis out there on the children or the people that are selling, to make that sure when they are selling these products, if they are doing it in person, that they follow the CDC guidelines that we established in place. I think we need to say something about that.
That's true.
And I have a second question.
Mr. Ward, I agree with you, I, I, I think one thing that I heard this morning when the, uh, Alamo Regional Hospital, I mean, uh,
Yeah, yeah.
But, I, I, they said it-
Yeah, and, and I have a, a, a question also.
The wearing a mask and social distancing and washing your hands and-
Right, right.
Say it all the time, and I, I, I don't think you can say it enough, so I, I, I think you're exactly right, Mr. Ward.
Yeah, yeah, I think we just need to emphasize that. But I do have a question for, um, a question. Uh, um, Ms. Ward, uh, I, I, I read your cover letter and I think that's exactly right and very much appropriate, but you only received requests from four schools, what about the other three schools? I, I mean, I know they're thinking that maybe we may not be in session, but do they have an opportunity to submit requests as well?
Yes, sir, everybody did, these were just the only schools that decided to fit, submit requests for the fall semester. We do go back and ask again in the spring, uh, so they will have an opportunity to put forth fundraisers for the spring.
Right, but I tell you, I would be interested in knowing why they chose not to submit something, that's totally interesting to me. But anyway, uh, thank you so much.
We've been hoping over women for that, I think, yeah, I think so. I mean, if, if they, everybody has-
Okay. Now, I'll, um, I'll, I'll request again just in case they thought maybe it wasn't appropriate to even submit at this time. So, I'll ask them to go back and, and reconsider that.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion forward, we approve the, uh, uh, fundraiser request for the twenty twenty-one school year, uh, for the fall semester. Um, if they promptly move, any, uh, any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried, thank you. Uh, next is, uh, four point one, Father Special, Dr. Wright?
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, if I, if I'm not out of order, I have, uh, we have two new employees here. Uh, uh, Mrs. Benea Field is with us today, she's our new, uh, reception children's director and, uh, certainly wanna welcome her aboard. And then Ms. Shawna Cherry will actually be joining us on October first, this Thursday. Uh, however, she is, uh, zoomed in to the conference and, uh, and listening, but she will be our human resources executive director, I mean, I can say she'll be joining us officially on October first. Uh, so I'd certainly like to welcome those two ladies, uh, to our team. Uh, also, in addition, uh, Mr. Chair, I apologize for not having this earlier. Uh, we have an employee, Ms. Patrice Wofford, uh, who is, uh, Herford County Middle School's employee and she, uh, has been accepted into the Masters of Administration Program at East Carolina and it is called the Pirate Leadership Academy. Uh, and so, Ms. Wofford is, uh, it is akin to the old Principal Fellows Program. That's kinda the, uh, the cohort that most of us would be familiar with. It's done through East Carolina and so, uh, Ms. Wofford would be, uh, needing a leave of absence for this first year, um, to be a part of that, uh, the funding is in place, uh, that, her salary will be, uh, provided through East Carolina for, uh, for this first year. And so, uh, Mr. Chair, again, I apologize for not having this on the agenda, but we do need approval for that. Uh, it is the board's question.
Are you gonna request, Chairman, from the administration that we approve, uh, Patrice Wofford to, uh, enter the-
Pirate Leadership Academy.
Pirate Leadership Academy.
Mr. Shields, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Ms. Wofford's request to enter the Pirate Leadership Program.
Second it.
Promptly move and second, uh, any further discussion?
And it was in the board, uh-
Yes, sure was.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm gonna cut in front of Dr. Wright, 'cause I forgot the three point three, the Northampton County, uh, Herford County Smart Start, um, um, facility used for, uh, over the twenty eighth, alright?
Drive-through.
Drive-through. Need a motion to approve that, um- Drive through, um, smart start.
Are you waiting for a motion?
Yes, sir. Please.
Oh, okay. Well, Mr. Shields, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we approve the Hurford and North Hampton County request for their Smart Starts to have a drive-through, uh, program at Riverview Elementary School, I believe.
Second it.
It's been promptly moved, second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now we're at four point one, resignations and retirement and transfers.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have resignation, retirements and transfers for your, uh, consideration, uh, for information, Sharon. Uh.
Motion detected at your front door.
Four point two, uh, we have certified and classified recommendations for you today. I have three certified recommendations. Ernest Cooley, Cheryl Hawthorne and William Britton. And then I have two classified recommendations, Katrina Winborn, Keisha Johnson.
Uh, you hear a request coming from the administration for the certified classified staff.
Mr. Shields, I rec- uh, I- I'd like to motion that we approve the certified and classified recommendations being, uh, coming from the superintendent.
Second.
Uh, it's been promptly moved, second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next is four point three, uh, additional performance.
Uh, Mr. Shields, members of the board, I have, uh, three additional employment requests at this time.
No, that's- that's- that's, uh. You hear a- a request coming from the administration for the additional, three additional employment request?
I make a motion to approve the three additional employment request.
Second.
It promptly moved, second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next is four point four, um, uh, a stipend for HR, a stipend for HR personnel.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, if I'm in order, that we approve the stipend as presented.
Second it.
It promptly moved, second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next we have the, uh, FFRCA leave for, uh, Ms. Parker, an employee.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the leave for Ms. Parker at this time.
Chairman. Wendy Hall. Yes, sir. It's- it's been promptly moved, second. Any further discussion, Mr. Hall? Rebutting?
Oh, sorry. Oh, I thought I was seconding it.
Okay, I- I couldn't. I think you- you kind of, I guess, I- I wasn't exactly sure.
Okay, that's okay.
All right. Uh, all- all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Um, next is superintendent's report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, I have, uh, a few updates here. Uh, first of all, please, uh, let's keep the Gatling and Keaton family in your thoughts and prayers for the loss of, uh, Ronald Gatling's sister. Uh, Mr. Gatling is a maintenance employee, uh, here in our district and also the chairman of the, uh, Herford County Commissioners. Uh, he lost his sister, Alfreda Gina Gatling Keaton of Greensboro, North Carolina. Um, and, uh, the, uh, service was held on- on Wednesday, September thirtieth at one thirty PM at Calvary Missionary Baptist Church. So please, uh, let's continue to keep her, uh, and her family in our thoughts and prayers. Uh, also, uh, Herford County Public Schools bus classes were a great success. They were held on August twenty sixth through twenty eighth in the boardroom from eight thirty AM to three o'clock PM. There were four men who completed the course. Uh, Early College High School has hosted a virtual parent check-in. Uh, those are designed to provide updates to parents about remote learning. Uh, and they are, uh, ongoing every other week. They hosted a virtual Beta Club induction on September tenth. They hosted a virtual senior student and parent information session. And Amy Denton from CFNC, uh, along with Mrs. Van, provided students and parents with FAFSA information, um, and applying and assisted them in applying for college. Uh, they hosted a drive-through progress report pickup on September seventeenth. CS Brown High School STEM hosted a virtual solar, uh, for students professional development with Dominion Energy on Friday, September fourth. Uh, they hosted a virtual Canvas workshop on September twenty sixth with ninth graders and their parents at six PM. The tenth graders and their parents were at six thirty PM. They also hosted a virtual Canvas workshop on September twenty third for eleventh graders and their parents at six and twelfth graders and their parents at six thirty PM. Also, uh, as an update, uh, contract, there was a contract signed and sealed between, uh, us here at Herford County Public Schools and the town of Murfreesboro, uh, and that is to continue the telebo- television broadcast, uh, on the PEG channel, our Public Information and Government Channel. Uh, that agreement was entered into on, uh, September twenty third, twenty twenty. It's been, uh, several years, um, since a signed agreement dating back before my superintendency, excuse me. And so, um, we got that updated on September twenty third, um, and we expect to continue that relationship for many years to come with the, uh, hosting of the PEG channel. Uh, also, uh, we'd like to send our condolences out to, uh, our- our own board member, Mrs. Sheila Porter, who lost her mom. Uh, Ms. Juanita James, our condolences to, uh, the James and Porter family. Uh, we certainly have been and continue to, uh, keep you in our thoughts and prayers, Ms. Porter. Thank you. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, next is, uh, 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 board, uh, it's board comments, but, um, Mr. Hall, you want to go first with the state board?
Well, thank you, and I will be brief. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason why I will be brief because the state board is meeting now as I speak. We started, the state board started this morning at ten thirty. And of course, I chose to be with, uh, Herford County Board and not the state board. So, uh, there are some items dealing with the cares monies that the board had to deal with this morning and then some other personnel items. So, any and everything else has already been discussed, uh, thus far. Uh, the state board, of course, uh, supports the governor in- in opening, uh, for K five students, uh, if the district so decides. But beyond that, Mr. Chairman, that's about all until I can hear back what the state board did, uh, this morning or doing now. So thank you for that opportunity. And I wish, uh, everyone a safe, uh, time period. I think the lady said this morning, a mass do work. And we just need to make sure that we continue emphasizing that. At some point, Mr. Chairman, I don't know when, that, uh, we will be discussing K five and the high school situation. But, uh, and athletics, all of this rolling up now, uh, quickly as we speak. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank- thank you, Mr. Hall. Uh. Mr. Delancey.
Thanks, sir. Uh, my condolences certainly go out to Mrs. Porter for the loss of her mom, who I had a chance to know and to meet and to- to greet on many occasions. And also to Mr. Gatling, who lost his sister, who I sort of grew up with and had a chance to know her. Uh, I certainly want to encourage everybody to continue to be safe, uh, during these times, because that's crucial. Uh, and Mr. Superintendent, I'm having a little problem with my iPad. If you can have Mr. Lang to just give me a call so we can try to get this thing straight out there, uh, sometime today. Thank you so much and everybody else.
If you guys are interested, then we'll do so. Yes, sir.
And everybody else just remain safe. Thank you.
Uh, Reverend Shannon.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, let me just say I want to send my condolences out to my classmates, uh, Mrs. Shields and passing of your mother and to the, uh, James family. Uh, we went over to the nursing home and we did have prayer on the very week that she, um, passed. Um, Ronald Gatling and his family, I talked with him and gave him all of some condolences as well. Mr. Chair, you and the superintendent want to thank you all for bringing the, uh, Department of Health Human Services, this Ashes Stute and her people before us this morning. Uh, that discussion was very helpful. Uh, given a lot of phone calls from- from the parents and staff, teachers, a lot I'm afraid, a lot I'm scared. And this information was certainly helped me to help them as we, uh, proceed going forward. Um, you know, it was two years ago when I ran for this position and then now I see that, um, all the signs are out there. We got people running for the Board of Education. They just- just kind of bring back memories of that. Uh, my first time in the arena. I haven't seen any of your signs over here in Murfreesboro. Um, uh, then Mr. Har- Mr. Hall, I've seen a lot of your signs and everything. But I do want to say that I'm getting some questions about the athletics. So you're right, Mr. Hall, we need to discuss that, I guess, pretty soon.
It's gonna come.
Um, let's see what we can do with that. It's gonna come. It's gonna come. Do want to say everybody be safe, stay safe and, um, stay healthy.
Um, next board.
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody that, um, was with my family, thoughts, prayers, phone calls, emails. I really appreciate your support. It meant a lot during that time. And I would just want to say thank you and want you to stay safe. And, um, addressing the Health Department this morning, I think it was a great presentation and it's one that I feel all of us should hear, uh, because it was very informative on, um, things that occurred during COVID. And maybe we can get it out to all of our Herford County school family through Google or some way. I also would like to send my condolences to the Gatling family, Ronald and his family concerning his sister. My thoughts and prayers are with you. And for all of the Herford County Schools, um, staff and family, I want to say thank you. I think you have done a superb job in opening school and continued to address whatever questions or concerns that parents had. I've only heard good things about you and your dedicated and hard work. So just stay safe and continue to keep yourself and your family str- um, safe also during this period. Thank you so much.
And I too would like to send my condolences to you and- and your family and- and this.
Thanks.
E- everybody, um, it's- it's just, you know, when you lose a family member, it's just, it's- it's really, really tough and takes, just takes time and- and- and I don't know if you ever get over it. I think you learn to cope. I- I- I think, but it just takes time. Uh, I- I- I hope, Ms. Porter, your time goes quickly so that- so that you're- you- you can, you can.
Thank you.
Get through the- the sad times and remember the good times, because that's what you got remembered or something like that.
That's true.
I too would like to, uh, ask and request the superintendent, maybe we could get the Health Department to do this, a- a virtual meeting through a- a personal development day or something like that. Because I think it, that was the most informative thing I've seen on COVID in- in a while. And- and I think it would be great for our staff if we could have a- have a virtual, uh, meeting like that for them because I- I- I probably learned more about the dos and don'ts and how safe it is and how not safe it is and what to do and what not to do, uh, probably since this pandemic has started. And I think it would be, uh, uh, it would ease some of the- some of the tensions and anxieties that we have as our staff has, um, and- and I think it would be great for our staff, um, and- and well worth it, well worth the time. Um, we need to have a meeting in, um, um, probably maybe, um. We- we need to have a meeting to discuss what we're gonna do as far as, uh, opening school and what we're gonna- what we're gonna do. Um, the second nine weeks, I think it are in college starts, um.
October eighth is the, October eighth. And so this is October fifteenth.
So we- we probably need to schedule a meeting between then and then to discuss that and see what we're- what we want to do or what the superintendent's plans are. Uh, are there any days that are not good? I've- I've got several, but I, uh, um, I need to look at the calendar. Have a meeting, bye.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I can't do six, seven and eight of October.
Okay. Um. We need to, um, maybe- maybe I can, um, um. So it's this, six, seven and eight around. It- it- it might have to be the following week. It might have to be, how about Monday to twelve?
It's great for me.
It's great for me. Columbus Day.
That's what I was thinking. We can march down Main Street. Like they do, like they do, uh, in- in New York.
So, so, Mr. Chair, we- we'll send a communication out basically saying, uh, we're gonna stay on C until or meeting on the twelfth and then, because that's gonna be a little bit past the, which I think is fine. But just, you know, I just want to make sure that we know that's where.
Is the twelfth okay with everyone else?
It's fine with me. It's fine with me.
Okay, all right.
But I don't think we have too much of a choice for our high schools.
No, we don't. We- we need to go ahead and get it, get it.
Yeah, yeah, they are. Yeah.
And- and maybe we also can plan on discussing athletics at the same time too, because, uh, I think vo- volleyball has.
Yes, yes.
Coming up quickly and, uh, I think first week in November, I think is when the alcohol kind of goes back to playing, I think. I just, with what I remember. So we need to kind of discuss athletics also, uh, um, so, um, and our- our record scheduled board meeting is on, uh, Dr. Wright's birthday, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Um, which I don't remember what day that is.
October twenty sixth.
October twenty sixth.
He had one of that.
Well, he- he's excited. He- he thinks you're gonna bring in Kate.
And evaluation too. Woo, what a birthday. And evaluation too, woo, what a birthday.
That's right, he gets a, he gets a eval and a, a, a birthday cake and a board meeting all at the same time, he can't get wrong with that.
What time is that, what time is that meeting on the twelfth, Mr. Shields?
Uh, the meeting on the twelfth is gonna start at ten.
Okay.
And, uh, and I, um, I guess it's depending on what we do as a board, who will decide whether our meeting on the, the twenty sixth is virtual or in person, maybe.
Okay, okay.
Anyway, um.
What about me being in person?
With, with, with that being said, is there any other comments? If, if not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
If a motion will adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It promptly moved, it's second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Let me go to my next.